Can everybody take two steps back again and try to get their face on the pledge rather than the midsection of your bodies?
So, what, say that again?
When we're doing the pledge, just look at, look at yourself and make sure that you, you can see each other's faces and hands versus.
Oh, oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Part of you. It's just, I know it's not a big deal, but I just think it would be better if we can see your.
No, I appreciate the suggestion. Yeah.
You're recording. Thank you.
All right. Want to welcome everyone. My name is Mike Peterson, the mayor of the city of Cotwood Heights. It is Tuesday, November 17th. It's seven to eight. Sorry, we're just a couple of minutes late. We were in our previous work session prior to this meeting. Again, want to welcome everyone who's online with us tonight. And with that, I need to read a determination by the chair of the council, which is myself, of why we're doing this via the internet. And that determination states pursuant to Utah code annotated 524-2074, the city's mayor as the chair of the city council hereby determines that conducting the meeting of the city council on this date at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. It is well recognized that a global pandemic currently exists related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, which has the potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting a meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. Thank you, everyone. And now we'll move forward with a pledge of allegiance. And I think we'll ask Tim Tingey if you'll lead us in that pledge. I appreciate it.
Yes, please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And thank you for stepping back. I'll even do better next time. I think my head was cut off, but I ran into my desk. First, we have on the agenda is citizen comments. Just a reminder for everyone that we have two other, or actually three other, a couple of other opportunities, I should say, for public comments tonight. One will be the public hearing on a proposed budget amendment. So if you want to speak towards that, you may want to hold off a moment from citizen comments. We're welcome to speak both. And following a public hearing after citizen comments, we also will be taking public comment on two items, one being Union Park Rezone and Affordable Housing Text Amendment. With that understanding, just a reminder, we have some guests online who want to make citizen comments. I'd ask everyone to be civil and no personal attacks. You know, we appreciate everyone's right to have an opinion and to share that opinion. We will allow everyone, because I think the numbers have come down a little bit from a few months ago. So we'll go back to the three minutes for an individual or if there's a group, please let us know and we'll allow additional time. And Tim Tingey, if you see him on your screen, when you get close to that three minutes, he'll just kind of raise his hand, which means we've got about 10 seconds left or something like that. And we'll try and be courteous and respectful of allowing you to finish your, your, your statement that's in progress. Okay, Paula, do you have someone who would like to make a citizen comment?
No one is raising their hand. I have Daniel Hales.
Welcome, Daniel. Go ahead.
I, yes, this is more of a procedural question about asking the question, but am I to understand that we're not asking questions about the proposed roundabout on Bengal Boulevard? And that would be taken part in a different time?
Yes, tonight, what you're calling right now is to make a comment. If you'd like to make a comment regarding that proposed roundabout, feel free to do that. Would not be questioned answers and we won't have dialogue, but we'll definitely note your questions if you have one in your statement. And we'll get back to you. And this is strictly citizen comment period of our work session. So thank you. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Thank you. I'll just make a brief comment and I appreciate the opportunity. So I have an engineering background and I have been throughout Europe and I've seen a lot of different roundabout designs. And, and I just wanted to make the comment that I hope that, that there's pedestrian access or connectivity from the northeast of the, of the roundabout there from where the LDS church is over to Brighton High School to create actually a pedestrian underpass under the roundabout and possibly create like a park feature, a mini park feature with a, with a pedestrian route. Because I think it accomplishes the goals of what, what the, the purpose of the roundabout is for. So just want to make that comment.
Thank you, Daniel. Appreciate it. And we'll be back in touch with you and maybe share a couple of thoughts. So thank you for your comment. Paula, someone else?
No one else is raising their hand.
Okay, I want to thank you for those, for Daniel making his citizen comments. We have a couple of other opportunities coming up. We'll close citizen comment period of our agenda and now move to the public hearing regarding our proposed budget amendment for 2020, 2021 fiscal year, at least the most current amendment. Scott, do you want to introduce that to us?
Yes, I can do that. Let me share the screen here.
I know we've seen it before, but it'd be good to be a quick refresher.
I was expecting a few more comments, so I was in the middle of having a little snack. Sorry about that.
Well, some of us have not had a snack, so don't mention it.
Oh, I won't mention it then. All right. So we didn't change anything from what we presented the two weeks ago. So we received $2,500 from Granite Construction back in June of 2019. Yeah, June of 2019. And so that's been booked through to the general fund and we're now, and it was going to be used for the 2020 Butlerville days that didn't occur because of COVID. So we're now going to reprogram that to be part of the Utah Open Lands purchase. So we need to move that money from the general fund to the capital improvements fund in order to be able to do that. In the capital improvements fund, there is the rebudget of the carryover project. The carryover projects, the net change that we had is we showed an increase in fund balance of $2,427,000 or, or $427,000 in the carry for, or in the fund balance. Of that, about $2,391,000 is directly related to projects that did not finish during that year. The projects, as you can see here, is $4,122,000 of expense, $1,730,000 of revenue coming to the net of the $2,391,000 in cost that, for those projects to complete. And one note that we noted last time as well is there were a few projects that, we had some that were a little above, some that were a little below. We always have little variances, but we want to take about, it's right around $200,000 of, of money on projects that finished up that we had, that were unspent and direct that towards that Scottish Drive Road and Stormwater project that was outlined to you about probably two months ago now, when we talked about that. Number three here is the pass-through funds from Salt Lake County. We'd originally thought this was going to flow directly from Salt Lake County to the Utah Open Lands purchase, but it needs to flow through us. So we're showing the expense and the revenue of that coming through. Then there's an additional contribution from Granite Construction for 9,000 that was received in September of this year towards the Utah Open Lands purchase. This is to budget that. This is the other half of the receipt of the money from the general fund here as a transfer in. And then the expense of two minute, or $2,500 for the granite construction contribution. And then number six is $40,000, $40,400 to utilize stormwater impact fees, some money that we have in reserve already to go towards a consideration of a program and development study of a stormwater utility fee. And this is really outlining all the components that go with how we're going to define the fee, how we're going to go through any, I forget the word, when a, when a resident protests a fee and we need to look at different options or when a resident has mitigating things in place to be able to possibly reduce their fee, different things along those lines that we need to put in place just as we take care of that stormwater fee as we move forward in that progress. That, that is up for consideration here in the future. So that, that totals it all out. All the money for this one, like I said, is in reserve in the, in the capital projects fund already. So we don't need additional revenue to be able to use that. It's already there. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. Maybe just one little side note with respect to the half million from the county and a couple of the contributions. Have we closed on that property yet?
Yes, we, we've already received the 500,000 here. We've already received the 9,000 and of course, have already received the 2,500. And we, we've went, we've gone forward with that due to the fact that this is, we've already received the revenue half of this and, and it had already been talked about.
Yeah, no, I understand that. My question is, have we, have we, you know, as far as Utah Open Lands, have we completed?
The answer is that it's in process and it's this week.
Yeah, I just think that's important for the council to know that it's been something that we, we've worked long and hard at. And thank you, Christine, for your efforts in that leadership. And it's a valuable asset to our community, but this is part of that amendment. So thank you. Any, any questions with Scott before we take comments in the public hearing? Hearing none. We'll now open it up, open up to public hearing regarding the proposed budget amendment for 2020-2021 fiscal year. Paula, do we have anyone who would like to speak to the proposed budget amendment?
Mayor, no one is raising their hand.
I guess that means Scott, they explained it well and we're good to proceed. So having no comments, we'll close the public hearing on the proposed budget amendment. And now we'll move back to the next item on the agenda, which is public comment. The first, I guess you can actually comment on either one of these. We'll do them in one combined public comment period. You can either speak to the Union Park Rezone or the Affordable Housing Text Amendment, but we'll first have Mike Johnson introduce both of those. You can do, introduce them both and we'll take public comment on them both.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and maybe after the quick presentation, we'll give, I think both applicants are on the, the call. So maybe give them a quick minute to address anything I stated wrong or any questions and then go to public comment. Let me get this open here. Okay, so the first one I'll go through is the, the zone map amendment. This is an application to rezone 1166 Fort Union Boulevard from office research and development to mixed use. This is, this parcel is the famous Dave's, the previous famous Dave's building on Fort Union that's in the parking lot of the the Union Park Office Complex. As I stated in the work session, the, the actual ownership of the parcel includes these three parking lot parcels. And that was the original request was to rezone all four of them. That has been modified. You'll see that in the later slide to only include a request to rezone the parcel with the building on it. So the parking lot will remain zoned as it is today. The property is just, just barely over an acre, almost exactly an acre in size. And I'll go to, it's going all over, sorry. The, the staff recommendation, which is approval and the planning commission recommendation, which is also approval, is largely derived from the general plan land use designation for this parcel, which is mixed use. As I noted in the work session, the current use as a restaurant is actually non-conforming in the office research development zone. The, the proposed use that, that is intended is a financial institution. However, they will be entitled to anything allowed in the mixed use ordinance, but even that use would be allowed under today's zoning, but with much more restrictive setbacks. So the mixed use zone is both compatible with the general plan, more compatible than that parcel is today, and also provides more reasonable standards to, to develop that property in the future. And this is kind of the, the example I went over in the work session. To redevelop it without a zone change, you'd have to have a 50-foot setback on every side of that property, which leaves you with very little buildable area. It's well, quite a bit smaller than the, the existing building there today and really not feasible for a property of this size. So again, the recommendation is to rezone just the, the building parcel, not the parking lot ones to mixed use in compliance with the general plan. The planning commission recommendation was also unanimous on this. As I stated, there was one public comment that had some concerns from the owner of the office park. And we got an update from that owner this afternoon and, and said the, the private negotiations were in a good place and that there were no concerns, so long as the only parcel rezoned is, is the building one and not the parking lot ones. And, and that is what we are proposing tonight and what the applicant is, is okay with as well. Mayor, do you want me to give time to the applicant now or present both of these and then hear from each of them?
I, I'd give a couple of minutes to the applicant now, then we'll do the same on the affordable housing piece as well.
Okay, let me find that. There's a few of them on. I'm going to add.
If, if one of the applicants just take a couple of minutes.
Yeah, I added Rob Merrick. I believe he is the representative for the applicant.
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can, Mr. Merrick. Go right ahead. Thank you for joining us.
You're welcome. Appreciate time to be here and talk to you guys. So our primary goal here is to make it, excuse me, a buildable site for our client. So with the current ORD, again, with those 50-foot setbacks, you end up with a 2,000 square foot pad, which really isn't buildable for anybody, not just us. And they did mention that, that current building is what far as use and setbacks must have done prior and just grandfathered into this zone because it, it wouldn't be allowed either. So we're fine with the, the three other parcels that are part of this lot staying as ORD. We just plan on using those as parking and we're working through agreements with the, the park owner to kind of revise the easements that are in place just to, to benefit everybody there.
All right. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Any other questions? I don't really have any other comments.
Mike, we appreciate that. We'll give an opportunity for council second maybe to ask a question, but I think Mike's done a good job of representing the issues in our previous work session. So we hold on. Mike, let me move ahead to the Affordable Housing Text Amendment.
Thank you. Again, as discussed in the work session, this is a applicant proposal from Rockworth Development, who is also the applicant on the Northern Gravel Pit PDD actual development application. This is a request to modify the text of the PDD ordinance, which is chapter 19.51 in the city code, specifically modifying the affordable housing provision in that ordinance. I'm going to skip ahead one slide. The current ordinance for affordable housing requires that for any projects that have at least 50 multifamily or 50 residential units in the project, 10% of those have to be affordable to households earning not more than 50% of the city's median income. The applicant submitted a proposed text amendment to, to modify that provision so that a minimum of 10% of units in projects with 50 or more units provide BMR units affordable at or below 80% area median income. So it increases the, the area median income or the, the affordability from 50% AMI to 80% AMI. Staff's original recommendation prior to the planning commission hearing was to allow some sort of flexibility to allow the provision of 80% AMI units. As we discussed, we started with a, you know, a general range. We, we wanted to incentivize applicants in the future that, that may still want to propose or provide lower or very low income units. So, so our recommendation was somewhere between 15, 15 and 20% of units be provided. If those units are 80% AMI, if the units are more affordable, say 50% AMI or 30 or, you know, some other lower income housing band, then you could decrease the number of units you would need to provide at that rate. And that would be based on council discretion and some established sliding scale to provide that flexibility. The planning commission considered this and they made a recommendation that they were comfortable recommending approval of the proposed text amendment with the condition or the suggestion that the, the minimum number of units provided at 80% AMI be 20% of units in a project rather than 10%. Again, with that flexibility. So, so the more affordable, 50%, 30% AMI units are provided, the, the fewer units need to be provided at that rate. As of today, the applicant, and I should clarify because this, this was a little bit confusing on my part in the work session. The, the applicant, their proposal up until today remained as the same, the, the 10% of units provided at or below 80% AMI. Today I received correspondence saying they were comfortable at 15% of units provided at 80% AMI, again with the flexibility that was already discussed. Again, as stated, staff at a high level is generally supportive of, you know, of the 15% that was in our original recommendation. That's something we were considering bringing forward in a city initiated amendment. Anyways, however, we are going to take a little bit deeper dive into that and we'll come back at the next meeting with a, a stronger recommendation and some findings to back up whatever recommendation we make. So, so that's the general proposal. I have a lot of background information that basically covers from a policy standpoint, 80% AMI housing provided at 80% AMI is, is still commonly recognized as affordable or below market rate housing. So in terms of the city's priority in providing affordable housing to residents and to people that want to live here, changing this from 50% to 80% does not put us out of compliance with any, any master plans we have or any, any policy requirements we're obligated to implement. So 80% again is still recognized as affordable. 80% is a little bit easier from the private development side to get private financing for, things like HUD financing and other programs exist that, that aren't as common for, for the very low income units. So the trade-off there is, is we may see more requests for subsidies or for city participation. If units are, if the requirement remains at a 50% and, and at 80% AMI, we may see, we, we hope to see a little bit more investment privately to help implement these units. Any questions of me? And if not, I'll, I'll add the applicant and let them add a few things.
Yeah, let, let the applicant take two or three minutes and just, again, I think from our previous discussion in our work session, we understand that staff will bring back more clarity within their recommendations, specifically centered around the multiplier sliding scale concept. And so with that being said, who's our guest, Mike?
We've got Adam Davis.
Mr. Davis, welcome. Go ahead and take a couple of minutes and share with us your perspective of why you would like to see the text amendment.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. We appreciate being here tonight. And we are absolutely supportive of affordable housing, not only within the city of Cotwood Heights, but within the state of Utah. This is a critical issue. And Mike, if I have the ability, I'd like to just share my screen quickly. I think this is a slide that we had shared before and is, is somewhat telling. I think the, the, the purpose of our text amendment here, as Mike has stated, maybe we're, we're accelerating a little bit what a change that staff had planned to make, but also just to, to bring some clarity and, and bring this, this project and the definition for affordable housing within state and county norms. And the, I don't know if I can share, but the slide.
Hold on one second. I'm going to promote you to a panelist and then you should be able to share your screen. Okay, Adam, if you can unmute, it should work now.
Can you all see my, my screen, the municipalities with RDA and affordable housing?
Yeah, we can see it. And I know Mike has shared this with us this before, so it looks familiar. Yep.
Yeah. And I, and I think this is, I think this really is the, the crux of what we're discussing. And I, I listened to the work session and I think this is an important policy discussion. And I think there's, there, there are two parts to this. You know, number one is just the, the definition of affordable housing. And Mike has shared a lot of information with regards to 80% AMI as the standard for HUD and the standard for the state of Utah is defining low income housing. And so that's, that is one part of the text amendment that we feel, you know, just based on our conversations with staff and, and the change that was, that was going to be presented to bring the city zoning ordinance within, within the same standards as, as the state and then also the other municipalities within Salt Lake County, as you can, you can see here. There's a long list of cities that 80% AMI is the standard. The interesting thing here is, I think, you know, Mike alluded to this, is the, the percentage of units that we provide as affordable. And that, that's where this issue becomes very difficult for private developers, especially at 50%, but then even, even at 80% to finance projects where the percentage of affordable units are greater than 10 to 15%. And as you can see on this slide, the, the way that's mitigated in surrounding municipalities within the county is typically, and I know this was discussed in the work sessions, typically some type of subsidy or some type of subsidy from the municipality, whether it's tax increment financing, whether it is CRA funding. But there is, there's a gap even at 80% AMI that needs to be filled. And so that's our challenge and that's, I think, regardless of this project, projects going forward within the city in order to achieve these levels of affordability are going to need some type of, as we've said here, offer some type of, of financing or subsidy from the city to, to fill and to achieve that gap. And so as, as we've looked at our project, and I think our project is probably representative of, of projects that are going to move forward in the city. At 80% AMI, we feel comfortable at, at 15% of the units, we can end up financing the project privately and be able to move forward. When we move beyond that threshold. We can end up financing the project privately and be able to move forward. When we move beyond that threshold, that becomes challenging. And I understand that that this is a policy discussion that that the city needs to have, but I think we are absolutely supportive of affordable housing. And our goal here is to is to bring the Cottonwood Heights zoning ordinance in line with, as as we said, federal, state and and county guidelines with regards to affordable housing. And then if currently within the city, there's there's not an RDA, there there's not they're they're not community reinvestment funds available, there's not a TIF available. And so with without that subsidy, that's why we're offering up and requesting that that fifteen percent of the units be designated as affordable. This this provides an increase of affordable units on our site from forty-two to sixty-three, so one, you know, twenty-one additional affordable units. It allows us to move forward and and to provide additional housing affordable and market rate within the city.
Adam, Adam, thank you very much. We appreciate that introduction and clarification. And and Mike has presented much of this information. We appreciate you joining us tonight as well. Tonight with public comment, we want to see if the public has any comments regarding either one of these two issues, Union Park rezone or affordable housing text amendment. Before I open up that for the public again right now, council, any questions of our two guests?
Mayor, can we take just a minute and have maybe have Mike Johnson reiterate the exceptional nature of having the developer appear to be so heavily handed in writing our laws and ordinances? I think if I were if I were dialing into this Zoom as a first time constituent or citizen of the public, I would, my alarm bells would just be going off that this seems like everything I ran against, the cronyism and maybe we can explain to the public why it's coincidental or however you want to frame that.
I I think anyone's entitled to make an application for a zoning text amendment. It's in the fee schedule. It's a land use process, and that's what's taking place. We also did bring this. We when we knew the applicant was interested in exploring this, we did bring this before any application was made to the council for discussion. And the council said we would be interested in in hearing the planning commission's input, at which point we directed the the applicant that if they'd like to pursue this change further, they have to make a complete application following the the public procedure and the ordinance to do that. And that's what they did.
Remind me what the density would be here if we didn't go through the PDD?
Well, it would depend on the on whatever zone. The property is zoned residential right now. That's not the the long range use. I think the land use on it without the PDD is mixed use, which doesn't allow us nearly as high of buildings, but allows thirty-five units per acre.
So what would that number be? Sorry, I don't have my calculator.
Thirty-five units, let's see, times twenty acres roughly.
Be seventy.
Seven hundred.
Yeah. Also, I want to remind the council that this is referring to text amendment. This whole development, because it's in the PDD zone, will come to the council and we'll be looking at all the detail related to development at a later date. This is with reference, it's administrative issue with respect to the text amendment as presented to bring us more in line with what I think staff has shared with us was something was probably out of line. And again, tonight's public comment on it and staff has been directed to bring back further information at a future meeting. So tonight's public comment and Tim, did I see you want to make a comment a minute ago?
No, Mike addressed the issue. It's it's a it's an application, as he mentioned, and we have to consider an application. That's why you have the applicant presenting as as part of this.
Yeah. Christine?
Oh, sorry.
Oh.
I just didn't hit.
All right. All right. Thank you. Let's move to the public comment on both the Union Park rezone and affordable housing text amendment, both of those proposals. Paula, do you have anybody who would like to speak to either one of those?
No one is raising their hands, Mayor.
Okay. Hearing from Paula that we have no one who would wish to speak to the Union Park rezone, affordable housing text amendment under a public.
Oh, Mayor, I have a, I have an Adam Davis.
Adam, I thought you already just spoke, but you're welcome to take a couple more minutes, please.
I did. I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify one point. As Councilwoman Mickel asked about the density and I'll just.
That's Michael. M I K. Hello.
I I apologize, Mike.
Especially the first four letters are important.
I I will just point out that that as as Mike said, under the the current mixed use, it would be thirty-five units to the acre. And that's actually the density that that we are requesting here is thirty-five units to the acre. We're not, we're not looking for any that there is no real density bonus associated with the PDD with regards to this, just because of height and whatnot. We have four hundred and twenty-one units and and on the residential portion, it's it's roughly twelve acres. So it's about thirty-five to the acre. I just wanted to clarify that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Adam. Appreciate that. Now, with reference to the text amendment itself and a reminder that the city council will be looking at the full breadth of the project going forward with emerging issues and and questions. So Paula, I understand there's no further request to comment regarding those two items. Hearing none, then we'll close public comment period on those two items, five point one to five point two. And we will move now down the agenda to, I think we have four, actually five of consent calendar action items. The first item for your consideration tonight is consideration of ordinance three forty-eight, approving amendment to the twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one budget as was presented by Scott. Any questions or comments regarding that ordinance three forty-eight?
No, I appreciate Mr. Jurgis' preparation and presenting it to us and bringing things up to date. And I would move that we approve ordinance three forty-eight.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bracken. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
It's been moved by been moved by Councilbracken and seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any further questions, comments? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Next item, which is six point two on your agenda, is consideration of ordinance three forty-nine, approving the rezone of eleven sixty-six East Fort Union Boulevard from ORD zone to an MU zone. Any final comments, questions on that?
No, my 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 possible request would be maybe to put this on a long term study and to look at those ORD and setbacks in our lot lines and how it actually conforms with what we have to see if there might be a way to to better improve that. So we don't run into this kind of a strange situation. There might be a better way to word that. That's not an immediate thing, but it may be something we want to look at going forward.
Yeah, especially where we've inherited some things from prior to becoming a city here. Thank you. Entertain a motion for approval of this application or this ordinance three forty-nine.
I move we approve, Mayor.
It's been moved by Councilmember Peterson. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bruce. Any further comments, questions? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Bracken.
Um, yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
I will vote yes. Next item on your agenda is item six point three. It's a resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-four, approving an updated affordable housing plan. It's pretty straightforward, but I'd like to, Mike, you just want to introduce that real quickly.
Yeah, thank you. This is a an annual requirement of us that was effective beginning last year. Last year, we actually adopted a brand new affordable housing master plan that is an extension of the city's general plan following state guidelines. This year, we were just required to update the some of the data that's within that plan and provide a status update of our progress on each of the goals that we decided as a city that we'd like to pursue. So so you've got the report. I'm just, I'll be very brief, but I'm going to share the screen quickly to just show some of the information that's in that report. That just shows the some of the data that's in this new update. You can see here, this is this is a breakdown of cities, of the city's income bands and the the units, the households in each band right now in the city. You see, a majority of the city is has an annual income above one hundred percent median area median income. And the largest band underneath that is at fifty to eighty percent AMI range. You can see the breakdowns down below, thirteen point six percent of our our households are in that range. And then we, you know, we have a good number below that as well. This is a, this is kind of data overload, so I won't spend too much time. But this this top table EX two shows the the updated AMI for Cottonwood Heights is eighty-seven thousand. It was about eighty-six thousand last year, so it's just a thousand dollars or even less greater this year. Comparison with with a the county, Salt Lake City, and then a sampling of other cities, just to show where we are. It can, it shows the what that means in terms of household affordability costs. So at eighty fifty to eighty percent AMI, that'd be, you know, a one thousand seven hundred dollar monthly household cost to be considered affordable. Some other information here, one new requirement this year is we have to actually separate out renter households as well. So table seven does that and shows the number of rental households in each affordability category. So the total low to moderate income rental households in the city is one thousand four hundred, of which of those eight hundred and eighty-five are cost burden, meaning they spend more than thirty percent of their income on housing. Four hundred and twenty-five of those fourteen hundred are severely cost burden, meaning they spend fifty percent or greater of their annual income on housing. That same analysis is on table eight for for owner households. And again, pretty similar number of owner households that are considered low to moderate income, eighteen hundred, eight hundred and ninety-five of which are cost burden and four hundred and twenty, which are severely cost burden. And then this study defines a percentage of households in each category that are considered at risk or cost burden. So you can see there. So the report contains other, oh, go ahead.
I'm curious on table eight, does that is it people who actually have mortgages or does it, I mean, I'm curious, does that include, for example, a a senior citizen with a very low income with a fairly nice house, but that doesn't have a mortgage? Are they included in there? Or is it what people are actually spending on their house or what they would be projected to be spending on their housing?
I believe this is just household income. This this doesn't take into account whether they're you know, making a monthly payment or, you know, it doesn't go into that level.
Okay.
This is just.
All right.
Monthly income compared to cost of housing. And you can see the information here. There there's a lag behind in in the reporting of information. So you can see this this data comes from twenty thirteen to twenty seventeen HUD data. There's it's just legs behind a couple of years. So the the data from last year was a, I think it was twenty ten to twenty fourteen or something like that. So there's just a slight delay, but this is the most updated accurate data we have. Again, there's there's more of this data in the actual plan. As a quick reminder, the three goals that that we chose to pursue to implement affordable housing are shown here. These are these, the wording here is exactly from the state code, but one is to allow for higher density or moderate income residential development in commercial and mixed use zones. Our mixed use zone does allow for residential. Two is to implement zoning incentives for low to moderate income units on a long term basis. While it's not really incentives, that's that's the PDD housing provision. We we identified that that PDD affordable housing requirement as a tool to help implement affordable housing in the city. And then three, which is still in progress, would be to utilize moderate income housing set aside from a community reinvestment area. And and we've got two that are in progress. They've been slowed a little bit, given the pandemic, but but they're still in progress. So those goals haven't changed. We've provided some some updates on those. And our requirement is to have this report submitted to the state by December first. But prior to doing that, it requires approval by the city council.
Thank you, Mike. Again, that report's in your packet. It's a great resource, especially as we continue conversations in this area. The it also ties to conversation we've had over the years about ADUs and those types of things. So the state is set to affordable housing is a high priority and we continue to get information and guidance from them as to some of our responsibilities. Any any further questions of Mike regarding the the update and this report?
Since you mentioned it, Mayor, I'm just curious if staff, if they had thoughts about readdressing the accessory dwelling unit conversation?
So what I will say is accessory dwelling units is one of the menu items that we could have chosen to put in our plan. Given that that, you know, that proposal was in the last few years brought to the council and did not pass. We didn't choose to to use that as as one of our identified tools. That doesn't mean we couldn't revisit it as a city. But but right now, our focus is on the three tools that I showed on the screen there.
Mayor, may I also add something on that?
Please.
I I was in league policy committee yesterday with the Utah League of Cities and Towns, and there may be some legislation that's proposed that would possibly require cities to allow ADUs within the envelope of existing structures. And so that that is being discussed. Nothing is formal yet, but it's just definitely something that's on the radar that one of the legislators is looking at possibly proposing, just FYI.
Okay, we have a draft policy that was pretty close, but there was some questions. So that's still on the radar. And if if we want to put that on the agenda for a retreat in January to prioritize it being revisited, we sure can do that. But yeah, the comments, questions. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-four our updated affordable housing plan as presented by Mr. Johnson.
Still moved?
It's been moved by Councilmember Bruce. Do we have a second?
And I would second that and just make for clarity's sake, because I was initially confused. This is our affordable housing plan. It's not the same as what we were previously taking comment on of the affordable housing text amendment. So it is a different item.
Totally different. Absolutely.
And I do second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Bruce and seconded by Councilmember Bracken. Any last comments, questions? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Councilor Bracken.
Yes.
Councilor Michael.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you, Mike, for that preparation. It's it's a good resource to have and okay, that's the last action item, other than we have a consent calendar item, which is approval of city council work session business meeting minutes. Remember, for no for number for November third, twenty twenty. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I move to approve, Mayor.
It's been moved by Councilmember Peterson. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Michael. Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
More importantly, for the record, are there any opposed?
I'll abstain, Mayor, since I wasn't present.
Okay, let the record show that we have four yeses and Council Bruce is abstaining because she was not present. All right. That's the end of our agenda for our business meeting. So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn unless there's a final comment related to the agenda.
I move that we adjourn.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bruce that we adjourn. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Peterson. All in favor?
He just wants to get to Hawaii. Aye.
Okay, again, any any opposition? Hearing no opposition, for the record, it was unanimous, and we are adjourned. Be safe, everyone, and thank you.
Have a good holiday.
Yeah, everybody.